Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 24 regular city council meeting. Please rise to salute the flag.
Roll call of the members. Councillor Argenzio.
Here.
Here, Councillor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councillor Garino Sawaya.
Here.
Here, Councillor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councillor Jaramillo.
Here.
Here, Councillor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Councillor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councillor Nowoselski.
Here.
Here, Councillor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Councillor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Coram is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of June 3.
So move.
Mr. President.
Councillor McKenna.
Could I have a point of personal privilege, please?
State your point, Councillor.
This past Saturday, the city lost a Revere icon, Tony Materia. Tony and his family love Revere and have deep roots to the city. Tony's father was the Assistant Superintendent of Revere Public Schools. His brother Mark taught for 38 years. His brother Christopher, nephew Michael, and son Maxwell are currently teachers in the system still. Tony was the husband of Denise Clondelli Materia, the father of three children Alexis, Maxwell, and Jenna, the grandfather of Caleb and Ethan. He was a brother, a teacher in Revere Public Schools for 32 years, a coach, and just recently got elected to the Revere School Committee. His beautiful legacy will live on. For over 36 years, Tony was a talented carpenter, and he probably did work for you at some point. Tony was my dear friend and a good friend to many. We will miss him deeply. Could we please stand for a moment of silence in honor of Tony Materia? Thank you. Thank you.
Calendar item number three. Keith Amelin of National Grid will appear before the city council to discuss double polls, specifically third-party attachments, which currently are holding up 21 double polls in the process.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Keith Amelin. My address is 27 Wilson Street in Worcester, Massachusetts, 01604. All right. So I know I was invited here to talk about double polls in the city of Revere. Specifically, we do have a lot of non-participating members in the Engines database, which we utilize along with Verizon Telephone to notify attachers on our distribution polls that they need to complete transfers once new polls are set. In doing a little digging, there are a couple of things that I wanted to bring up with the city and just try and figure out how to move forward best practice. There are locations around the city where there are street signs, whether it be no parking, speed limit signs, so on and so forth, that are holding up Verizon from removing those double woods. And I know right now with Revere, we do have one member code for the fire department, for all their fire alarm wire. They have been going through those and getting those transferred. There are still a handful that do need to be completed before other third parties can progress. In regards to street signs, does the city, I guess I'm not sure what the city would plan on doing to get those transferred to the newly set polls, whether it be DPW or utilizing a contractor that the fire department utilizes. But that certainly is going to be helpful in us sending notification to that department when the situation arises where they do need to get those street signs transferred. So I'm not sure what entity that would be. I'm certainly willing to work with them to get them established in our Engines database with a primary contact that we can notify in those situations. So that was one thing. There are a few other situations where we do have traffic signals that have risers on our polls that are owned by the city that will also need to get transferred as well. Similar situation, right now, we don't have a contact to specifically notify about those directly, so those do kind of get stuck in the cycle. Lastly, I do see record of Verizon going out and identifying that there's municipal wire or municipal fiber that's owned by the city that needs to be transferred. Same situation, not sure who the entity would be responsible for handling those transfers. If we have that available, again, we are more than willing to work with them to get that notification system in place so that they are aware and could get them taken care of in a timely manner. Outside of that, we do have two major cable companies, Comcast and RCN, which now goes by Astound Broadband, I believe. They have been notified about the transfers they need to complete within the city, and we'll be working over the next few weeks to get those completed in a timely manner. Additionally, there are locations in Revere where National Grid is the joint owner or is the sole owner of distribution polls, and transfers have been completed. We are working on developing a better way to kind of notify our operations crews in the city that when we are up to remove the double woods, that we get those done in a timely manner. I have spoken to the operations supervisor who covers Revere, and he will be working over the next two weeks to get anything that is ready to be removed, so that can get cleaned up. Lastly, I know that we do, it looks like at some point in time, and I wasn't able to get further clarification before I came tonight, but we do have streetlights where at one point, I think there was confusion on whether or not the city owned the streetlights. I don't believe that's the case right now, so there are a decent amount of streetlights that I think we actually need to go back out and transfer to the newly set polls. I have notified operations about that as well. So in addition to any double woods, any streetlight transfers we do need to make will be done within the next two weeks. Outside of that, really, I think my goal would be to try and work with the city for any municipal fiber, street signs, and any kind of traffic light risers that need to be transferred, who the contact would be, getting them in touch with the Rep Form Engines, which is Angie Weaver, and she will help set up a code for them, kind of walk them through the process, and make sure we have proper contacts in there so that they are notified and can get those addressed in a timely manner, so double woods don't continue to sit. So that was what I wanted to talk about tonight.
Thank you, sir. City Council, Councillor Nowoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome and thank you for coming up, for coming into Lion's Den.
That's all right.
And everybody's looking to beat up the lamb. But I've been working with Elena Alfaris.
Okay.
In your office.
Yes.
And she's been very good.
Excellent.
But let me say, first of all, as far as the signs are concerned, because I'm deeply involved in that stuff, DPW.
Okay.
The department does all the signs, and when I see, in my area, I have the Shirley Ave area.
Okay.
So when I see that they have a double pole up there, I send a request to our sign department to remove it from the old pole to the new pole.
Okay.
In some cases, they do it right away. Some cases, it takes a little time. But I know it takes time to move everything on the pole anyways.
Right.
You know, and there's one location at 190 Campbell Ave that there was a fire there about 11 years ago.
Okay.
And nothing's been done in that pole.
Campbell, okay.
So, but I told Elena run it, and she was going to get her ops folks on it. But, you know, in general, it is frustrating, and I know it's not always you, and we try to get the other agencies here at the same time.
Yep.
But they, you know, they haven't been, you know, coming, but, you know, at least we got you here finally.
Yes, yes.
But in general, I keep a list of every request that I send in for you guys.
Okay.
I know down in Garfield Ave, it took about three months to get three sets of poles adjusted and put new lights repaired.
Yes, yep.
Moving on a double pole, a flood lamp.
Okay.
To the new pole.
Yep.
And that hasn't been done, you know, in maybe six months.
Okay.
So this is the stuff. Now, did you give us this list last month?
So, yeah, I did provide Ms. Melnick with an updated list before I came tonight.
Yeah, I know this list doesn't work for us.
Okay.
All it gives is, it doesn't give the pole number, actually, the street address exactly.
So, yeah, so on my new list that I did provide, which if I have, if I can get your contact information, I can certainly forward that along to you as well.
You know, that would be great.
Yep.
Because, you know, I double check, and I send things in to you guys as much as possible, but, you know.
For sure. And I have cards as well that I can share with you all, so you can reach out to me directly, too.
That would be great. If you can give us your information.
Yes, certainly.
That would be great. So, thank you. I just wish you good luck and, you know, keep moving ahead. Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Garino Sawaya.
Hi, Keith.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I do have four new locations that need to be addressed. I wrote them all down for you, so you can just take this.
Perfect.
And then there's also an electrical box that's hanging off of Revere Street. It was picked up, but it's backed down. It's about seven feet off the ground, and it's hanging off of Revere Street across from 308. That needs to be taken care of.
All right.
Before than after.
Yep, for sure. I will definitely take a look at that.
Thank you, and I'll just give you this.
Not a problem. Yep, electrical boxes, my assumption is that we really don't have anything below or that low on the pole. It might be a power supply box that's owned by either one of the cable companies. I'm not sure if there's a small cell antenna on the top of that pole, but they do have, like, shrouds, which is basically another form of a power supply box to power the antenna. So I will double check to see what that.
It's really low to the ground, so it really needs to be put back up.
Sure. Is there, like, are you looking for a specific height to get that, reattach that? Usually, we try and do eight feet plus.
No, it's a lot lower than that.
Okay.
No, it's hanging. It's like literally hanging off of one of the wires.
Oh, okay. So it's coming off of the pole? Okay. All right, yep. I will certainly get that looked at.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Keith, thank you for coming up tonight. Keith, when other utility companies put lines off your pole, cable company or whatever, do they pay National Grid any type of fee or anything like that to use your poles?
Yes, they pay an annual rental rate for each pole that they attach to.
Okay, so that's great to know. The reason I ask is because it seems like, and I don't think it's any fault of your own, but it always seems like every time we get someone to come up from National Grid, we get the same exact spiel over and over again, why it takes so long, the other companies and so on. So I just think if they're paying you a fee and National Grid's making money off this fee, there has to be some sort of way that you can enforce these companies to come out and move faster than they are, because it always seems that we're bringing the same poles back in to do the same thing, because this telephone company didn't show up or didn't take their stuff off, or this telephone company didn't do theirs. And it doesn't seem like there's any type of oversight or way for anyone to step in and get them to do it faster. So I think if they're paying National Grid, that they should be able to respond in a manner that helps us remove these poles in a faster way.
Yep, and I 100% agree. One thing we are doing is we are creating a role within my department for basically an Engines Oversight Manager. So basically, for the state, they'll be looking at both our internal jobs, where we have new construction for new services, any kind of reliability jobs that we might do, reconducting. A lot of the times, my focus is more on looking at double woods specific to new third parties trying to get attached. The big reason we push on that specifically from my group is that new company, once we complete our work, Verizon Telephone, who's also a joint owner in the majority of the poles that we have, won't issue the license to that new third party until all the transfers are completed. So with Verizon, it's not, while they do have people go out and kind of monitor progression, they don't really push as much as we would like. So in an effort to try and combat as many double poles as we do have now, we are going to start interviewing shortly to fill that new position and have someone pay more attention to, like, aging double woods to reduce the amount we have and get them pulled faster. So that is a plan moving forward for us to put in place.
Thank you. However, we can help in the city to facilitate any type of signs that need to come down, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two questions for you. First of all, is your jurisdiction Winthropakway in Revere?
I believe so, yes.
We have two poles down that cars hit, and they're laying on the ground, and we have a box that has all wires coming up.
Okay.
That if a kid was walking, because that's a great pathway to the beach, if a little kid was walking and touched these, I don't know if they're live or not, but that should be taken care of, and that's been like this for a month. And the other question I have, so if you could take care of those two poles.
Certainly, yeah.
And the poles are laying on the sidewalk, so they're still there. No one's removed the poles, and this has been about two weeks now.
Were there new poles that have been set there, or no?
The poles were hit by cars.
Right, so I, yeah.
And they weren't taken away. They're still on the sidewalk.
Did National Grid come out and install new poles?
No.
Okay, so there's still this broken.
They're broken, and there's a box with wires coming out of it that might be live and could be a safety concern for anybody.
For sure.
So I think that should be done right away.
I agree.
The other thing is, I want to know, do you know offhand how many poles we have that the city, you know, the city has signs on? Do you have a number?
I don't have a record myself. I mean, I could tell you based on Engines tickets that we have, and I could query back and give you an idea, but I couldn't tell you overall how many signs.
So once those poles are done and the signs are taken off, then those poles will be removed?
Correct, and that would be Verizon Telephone.
Okay, so.
Remove all the poles.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
If you could just get me those locations, I will certainly get that escalated for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for coming here tonight, Keith.
You're welcome.
I don't know how you drew the short straw, but good luck to you. But I am encouraged, I have to say. You know, I've been here a long time. Everybody knows that. I keep telling everybody that. But I, so I remember when we didn't have a system at all. We do have a system now. I just heard something tonight that makes me, encourages me, that you're going to put a person in a position of authority.
Yes.
To oversee these people that are slacking, to put it in layman's terms.
Bluntly, yes, yes.
Because that's what it is.
Yep.
It's, you know, Verizon isn't doing its deal when it should be, and everybody's got priorities.
Right.
And our double poles have just not been priorities.
Yep, understood.
But I'm very encouraged with this new position. I think that you're going to oversee this and you're going to help us.
I will.
Solve some of these problems. So thank you again. Thanks for coming, and I don't know who you stepped on at National Grid, but some of these paying you back.
It's the job I signed up for.
I'm only teasing. I'm only teasing.
I know.
But I'm glad they did send you. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Keith, thanks so much for being here tonight. I just want to let you know, not a double pole issue, but we have a pole that's leaning in my neck of the woods on Malden Street 2701, so I added it to Councillor Sawaya's checklist, if you don't mind checking that one out.
Yep, certainly will.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Janino.
Keith, thanks for coming tonight.
Yep.
As far as the city stuff is concerned, I have no problem being a go-between between your company and the city as far as the signs and the fire alarm and that kind of stuff.
Yep.
So, I mean, that's a no subject on it.
Right, so, yeah.
The double pole's one of the top five calls I get during the course of a week for people to call up the poles over and over again.
Okay.
As far as facilitating it, I have no problem being a go-between.
Right, so I think the issue at hand is, from what I heard earlier, it seems like you are getting stuff transferred, but in the Engines database that we use, we don't have someone assigned to basically check off that it's been completed. So I know that Verizon, every now and then, will go around and kind of do a spot check on open tickets and update things accordingly. I think the list I sent where our street sign is still left, Verizon hasn't come back to verify whether or not they're, that they're still attached. I think if somehow we could set something up with the DPW to either just show them, hey, here's a list of all the times that you are up next to transfer the sign, and you can just click complete, that will notify Verizon, everything's done, and they'll go out and actually remove the pole. So it might just be a case of people having got back around to those specific locations. The street signs might be transferred, and Verizon just might not know yet, because the system's still telling them, hey, there's something here before it's your turn. So, yeah, I can certainly work with someone to, within the DPW, just to send me emails directly saying, hey, we got these, and I'll kind of, I can monitor on your behalf and make sure those get progressed accordingly. So that's not a problem for me, but I think that's going to be kind of the reason why Verizon probably hasn't pulled poles where street signs have actually been already removed.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you, Councillor. Permission to speak from the chair. Keith, thank you for being here. Engines Oversight Manager. It's the best thing I've heard from National Grid in a long time.
Yeah, it's going to be good.
It's been hell. We call one utility. We're not ready to move on the pole. Well, who is? Oh, I don't know, then we have to call around, so I'm very happy to hear that. Tammy has been our direct contact for this council.
Yep.
Is that still the best contact for us?
Yes, Tammy Saporito, yes, yep.
Any chance I can have your number? I like the way you can.
Yep, I have cards that I can give to everyone with it.
Wonderful.
Yep.
That would be great.
Yep.
Any other councillors have any other questions? Sir, thank you very much for your time tonight.
I'll grab cards right now. Excellent, thank you.
All right. Place on file.
Calendar item number four, public hearings. Hearing called disordered on a loan order in the amount of $3 million for Phase 15 Construction Project Number 16729 for pump station and drainage improvements.
This is a public hearing. I'm going to open it to proponents first. Anyone in favor? Mr. Viskey.
Good evening, Mr. President. Rich Viskey, CFO, Toyota on Broadway. I am here to speak in favor of the $3 million loan order for continued efforts with our consent decree. As you may notice, this amount is much less than we've had in the previous years. We're hoping that we can keep this amount low as we phase out of this consent decree. We weren't even going to come to the council and ask for bond authorization this year. However, we do have some previous bond authorizations that we're going to rescind, and by doing new bond orders for fiscal year 2025, we will have the ability to get some principal relief through some of the oppo funds that the trust is receiving. So we thought it'd be a better idea to come up here and get a new bond authorization where we can get some principal relief and then rescind some of the prior year bonds for these projects. So I am in favor of this bond, and thank you. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any other proponents? Anyone else speak in favor? Closing that side. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Close that side of the hearing. City councillors? Councillor Garino Sawaya.
I am definitely a proponent for the pumping station. They're essential in managing the floodwaters and sewerage. During heavy rains, with the pumping stations, they're there to prevent the water from damaging the homes. And I have to tell you, in the Point of Pines, they changed the pumping station. They put in a brand-new pump, and it has been absolutely phenomenal. The water has not hit my home, and it used to come right up to the steps, and now with the new pumping station, it works incredible. And I am 100% for redoing all the pumping stations that we have in the city of Revere. And I think our pumping station expert who we had, which was Donnie Charmella at the time, and now we have Chris, who is following in Dad's footsteps. Thank you.
Any other councillors? Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think pumping stations are great, but we have to open them. So, and a lot of times, when there are storms, they're not opened to take care of the flooding. So I think that, and they're under, they're not, some of them are not under the city. So I just, you know, some of them are DCR, so I just think we need manpower to just open them and take care of the flooding. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Any other councillors? So we're going to have two roll call votes tonight. Madam Clerk, call the roll on the first.
Shall the city council approve a loan order in the amount of $3 million for Phase 15 Construction Project Number 16729 for pump station and drainage improvements? Councillor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Jaramillo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna? Yes, Councillor Nowoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved. And on to the resolution. Shall the city council approve the resolution relative to the Phase 15 Construction Project Number 16729? Councillor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Jaramillo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Nowoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been approved. Calendar item number five. Hearing called disordered on an ordinance requiring the publication of certain records of the police department.
This is a public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Anyone in favor? Seeing and hearing none. Any opponents? Anyone not in favor? Seeing and hearing none. Move to city councillors. Councillor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, we had a lengthy discussion in Health and Human Services Subcommittee regarding this motion, and two amendments were passed. Therefore, this evening, I would request that this motion be added to the agenda of the next Legislative Affairs Subcommittee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Jaramillo.
Mr. President, thanks for, to my colleague, Councillor Kelly, for proposing this. I just want to reiterate some of the conversation that we had in that Subcommittee meeting in Health and Human Services about the importance of ensuring harm reduction and trauma-informed work from the police department and in all our public communications. As we know, our city has been ravaged by a substance use pandemic, epidemic, and since the COVID-19 pandemic, a rise in mental health issues has caused a great deal of what would otherwise be defined as crime. So to that end, I am going to introduce an amendment to this motion that reads, after Section C, D directs the city's Office of Public Health and the Crisis Center clinician within the police department to create public policy recommendations that rule this ordinance and are trauma-informed and in the best interest of harm der�duction and mental health. And E, that this ordinance go into effect 30 days after said recommendations have been submitted to the mayor's office and city clerk, and that said recommendations are placed on file with the city clerk and the mayor's office.
Any other councilors?
Could, Mr. President, can I ask you to respond to that?
Counsel Kelly, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand Counselor Jaramillo's amendment. However, I do believe that the language in the amendment that was passed in the Health and Human Services Subcommittee, Section A, does speak to that, and therefore no other language is necessary. Thank you.
May I respond, Mr. President?
Yes, last one, then we're going to vote on the...
Mr. President, through you, to colleagues here at the dais and to the public, that as far as my knowledge, none of us here are mental health clinicians or substance use clinicians or doctors, and that I would, or public health professionals, and that recommendations from these folks are necessary to ensure that we're not stigmatizing a population within our city that is already historically marginalized. I understand, I don't understand the apprehension to have a truly academically informed, professionally informed, public policy decision-making process. With that, I close.
Thank you, counselor. So there's a motion on the floor to refer this to Legislative Affairs. All in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Next up is the Climate, Sustainability, and Workforce Subcommittee Report from June 17th.
Counselor Yarmio?
Mr. President, we ordered this to a public hearing. This is a motion to establish a pilot program for a composting, composting pilot program, whereas we can allocate the mitigation funds from our traditional waste program and allow alternative measures of compost, of waste disposal. Composting has a great deal of benefits. In addition to the financial potential benefits that it could provide the city and its waste disposal program, it has other benefits that deal with land erosion and soil erosion, climate coastal resiliency, greenhouse emissions, et cetera. To that end, I know that our residents in the Pointe Pines area, and really from the information that I've received from the professionals, scientists, and climate activists in our city, we have heard at length about how certain practices of traditional waste produce quite a bit of pollution in our air, which travels up to 20 miles in radius, which means the entire city of Riviere is within that catch basin. Composting could help deviate up to 30% of that waste that ends up in said facilities from the, from the, from said facilities and reduce henceforth the amount of pollution. I hope that this is passed.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any problem with this going to a public hearing. However, we're a long way from implementing something like this. I want to know what it's going to cost. I want to know how it's going to remove the waste from the stream. There's all kinds of pie-in-the-sky ideas, but this is a serious undertaking that will cost a lot of money, will not save a lot of money, and I want to see the facts and figures. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Kelly?
She's a co-sponsor.
My apologies, Counselor Kelly. I didn't realize Counselor Garino-Sowaya was the co-sponsor. Do you mind if she goes? Thank you very much, counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Waste management is so important in the protection of the environment, but will also save the cost to reduce expenses for the disposal. It saves the environment from toxic effects of inorganic and biodegradable or compostable material that's present in waste. So if waste is not managed properly, it can cause water contamination, soil erosion, and air contamination, polluting the fragile ecosystem that's part of Romney Marsh. A waste management plan will serve as a comprehensive strategy guiding us towards sustainable, eco-friendly practices. Waste reduction, and it will help us stay compliant and, in the long term, saving us millions of dollars. I know it may cost a little bit of money now to start it, but in the long run, it will save the city millions and millions of dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do agree with this motion, and I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, but I would like to make a motion to send this to Ways and Means Subcommittee, just so that we can get a little bit better of a handle on what we'd be looking at for cost, what we would be looking at in terms of savings, and just, you know, get that information a little bit more detailed. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor to put this into the Ways and Means Subcommittee prior to a public hearing. All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
We have Counselor Garino-Sowaya?
And we do a roll call, Mr. President?
If you wish, absolutely. Let's take a roll call instead.
On the motion to send this to Ways and Means, Counselor Agenzio?
No.
No, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino-Sowaya?
No.
No, Counselor Haas?
No.
No, Counselor Jaramillo?
No.
No, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro? Yes, the motion will be sent to Ways and Means. Calendar item number seven, this is the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee Report from June 17th.
Counselor Kelly?
I'm sorry, Mr. President. We had a lengthy discussion in Subcommittee, and it was the will of the Subcommittee that this motion remain in Subcommittee for further discussion. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. President, sorry, point of personal privilege here.
State your point, counselor.
Sorry, before the motion was presented, I had asked to speak on the prior thing. I'd just like to clear up that, and maybe go through this ordinance for folks who didn't have enough time with it. So $25,000 of the money for this motion on the compost is coming directly from the mitigation funds that we're getting from our traditional composting program, and this is only a pilot program. This is not a citywide implemented program. So I would, if possible, have a vote on reconsiderating bringing this out of the Subcommittee.
So what Counselor Yarmio would like to do is you would have to suspend rules and then ask for reconsideration on the vote. So on the motion to suspend the rules, all in favor? All opposed? Let's take a roll call.
On the roll call to suspend rules of order, Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
No.
No, Counselor Garino-Sowaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Jaramillo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
No.
No, Counselor Novoselsky?
No.
No, Counselor Silvestri?
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No, and Counsel President Cogliandro?
No.
No, suspension of rules fails.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Next up is the report of the Committee of the Whole.
Permission to speak from the chair. Today, we met at the Committee of the Whole to discuss the, or have the final discussion about the budget. And if there's any comments that need to be made, or any questions, or any cut proposals, now would be the time, and what we're going to do is go department by department. I'll ask if anyone has any comments or questions or cuts for each, and otherwise, we're going to take votes on each individual line, not line item, but on this page, the payroll and non-payroll. Does anyone have any questions before we begin? Counselor Zambudo?
I just want to reiterate what I said at the Committee as a whole, that I think this is a responsible budget. I don't see any reason to cut anything from this budget, but my fear is the next budget and the budgets after that, that that's when we really are at risk. But this particular budget, I think, is responsible. I have no intention of cutting anything from this budget, and I think my colleagues feel the same way.
Thank you. Thank you, counselor. Counselor Novoselsky?
Mr. President, with all due respect, thank you. We had a Committee of the Whole prior to this meeting, and there wasn't one councilor that had any cuts or any discussions on it. And we've had, all last week, we had public hearings and meetings for people to come and discuss. There wasn't one comment or a negative of cutting anything in this budget. And instead of going through each item that you want to go through, I would like to move at this point that we vote on this right now and ask for a roll call.
You want to vote on the entire budget all at once?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes.
He just, there's a, there is a motion on the floor, and a roll call has been called. We're going to take a roll call right now to decide if we're voting on the entire budget as is. We're not going to go department by department. That's what the motion is. So, madam? We are going to decide through this roll call if we are going to then take a roll call to vote on the entire budget as a whole.
Mr. President, can I have a point of clarification?
State your point, counselor.
I need to recuse myself from the Inspeccional Services payroll. So I'll be happy to vote for the budget as a whole, just as long as that's on record that I'm recusing myself from the Inspeccional Service payroll.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Haas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Like Counselor Agenzio, I also have to recuse myself, but from the Parks and Rec budget. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion on the floor and a roll call, please.
Shall the city council move to take up the FY25 budget as a whole as opposed to going through department by department? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino-Sowaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Jaramillo?
No.
No, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the budget will be taken up altogether.
Is this the first time that's happened?
No, sir. No, we've, we've, we've done it before. We've gone all, the whole budget all at one time at the night that we're supposed to vote on it. All the discussion was done before at the public, at the meetings.
See some gift cards coming your way for saving some time, counselor. Under, under $50.
I'll take them too. I hope they're coming, I hope they're coming from you, sir.
Madam Clerk, on the entire budget, please call the roll.
Whereas pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 32, the mayor submitted a proposed budget for fiscal year '25 to the city council on June 3, '24. And whereas the city council held advertised public hearings to consider the proposed budget on June 10 and any other dates necessary. And whereas upon motion, the city council accepted the budget as submitted by the mayor after reductions otherwise separately voted, if any, there were none. Now, therefore, be it voted by the city council of the city of Riviere, that the city council of the city of Riviere hereby adopts and approves the budget for FY25, the sum of $274,420,435, which shall be, which sum shall be appropriated and raised by taxation and other sources as listed in the approving budget as provided by the city auditor. Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino-Sowaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Jaramillo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the FY25 budget has been approved.
Let's take a short recess. One moment before the recess. Mr. Visque?
I just want to thank all the councilors, especially all the new councilors, for having the faith and trust to vote that budget as it submitted, and thank you again. Have a nice night.
Thank you, Mr. Visque. Great job. Two-minute recess. Thank you all for your patience. Let's resume the meeting.
Calendar item number nine, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Danielle Nordenberg to the Public Art Commission.
Referred to... Oh, she's here tonight? Counselor McKenna, this is your Subcommittee, and I believe it's, they're asking you to vote this out tonight instead of sending it?
Yes.
That's okay with you?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Hello, I am Danielle Nordenberg, and I live at 14 Walnut Place, Riviere.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Counselor McKenna?
Thank you. I am the Commissioner of the Public Arts, and right now, we're on sabbatical because we've had a couple of, well, a few people leave. So we're going to start up again in September. But can you tell me about your background and what you have to offer the public arts?
Sure. I have a varied professional background. I've worked as a gallery assistant. I've worked in digital preservation, essentially digitizing microfilm and fiche, and editing that film to be legible. I've had a little bit of experience in film as well, and I maintain an active and ongoing art practice, and I work out of my studio at Joy Street Studios in Somerville. I am a painter. I have been painting regularly and committedly for about five to six years now, and during that time have exhibited in several galleries, including Shockbox Gallery in LA and Midway Artist Studios in Seaport. I am very passionate and dedicated to the arts, and I really hope to have the opportunity to activate some spaces in Riviere.
Great. You sound like a great fit. Great. You sound like a great fit. I'll, we'll be in contact. If you can leave your email address and your phone number for me before you leave, I would really appreciate that so we can get in contact with you.
Will do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming tonight. It's exciting to have you on board and to have you here in the city and, and helping us really kickstart an art culture that we're, we're really looking forward to. So, thank you. Good luck and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much for coming and I'm very impressed with your background. I know you're going to do a great job under the leadership of Ms. McKenna. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Danielle, having, having, living in my ward right now, and me being your city councilor, you being my constituent, you do have a great resume.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate it and I think you'll do a good job on the committee. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you for coming.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hermio.
Thank you for coming. I really appreciate you coming here and of course, look forward to seeing you serve in this capacity for our city. As you know, the arts has always been a good, a great way to highlight some of the more urgent crises in, in society and we need people with bold visions and I'm sure you'll bring that. Of course, our most urgent crisis right now is the climate crisis and as you could tell today, we're still dragging our feet on that as it relates to solutions. And so, you know, I welcome your, your leadership as it relates to art so that we can inspire folks to take bold action quickly because we've had a two-week heat wave and it's so important that we're capturing every single part, especially where you live in an area of environmental justice. You know, and a place where the arts have really come together and, and folks are really having a fruitful renaissance, right? There's a renaissance going down the Shirley Ave neighborhood that I grew up in and I'm just so proud of everything that, that you stand for.
Thank you, Counselor. On the appointments, all in favor, all opposed? So awarded, in the words of Counselor McKenna, do a good job for the city. Thank you.
Calendar item number ten, communication from the mayor relative to a residency waiver for Anthony Galizia as Assistant Superintendent Water and Sewer.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Members of the council, Claudia Correa from the mayor's office. Here before you to ask for a residency waiver for Anthony Galizia as Assistant Superintendent for the Water and Sewer Department. Anthony has been with the city for a good number of years now and he has the privilege of actually, he has actually the experience of working on the three divisions of the Water and Sewer Department, which is water, drain, and sewage. So, he also has showed a lot of leadership in his department and we also, he actually was the best candidate and we definitely wanted to promote within the department. So, he's here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Correa. Any city councilors wishing to speak? Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've known Anthony since he was a teenager. He started down the city ad as summer help. I've known him for a lot of years. Excellent at what he does. One of the main things, he has a Class Four Water Distribution License. Those are hard to come by and the city is fortunate to have somebody with that license and I, I know personally working with Mr. Galizia, you know, he's an excellent candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anthony, I just want to say congratulations. Look forward to working with you in the future and good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Giannino.
Thank you, Anthony. I'm in full support of this waiver also. I watched Anthony grow up in my neighborhood over the years and I'm in full support of it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anthony, congratulations. Look forward to working with you. I thought it was kind of cool you started out as a, as a sports journalist, much like I did many years ago, a little before your, before your time. But congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anthony, congratulations. Please, I'm not going to ask you any questions because I think she already answered all of them for you. So, I'm just going to say do a good job for the city. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, I just want to wish Anthony good luck. I know we do need a couple engineers in the department and to work on it because we have no one right now. And I look forward to having you. You have a great resume. I love what I see and look forward to working with you in the Public Works and Water and Sewer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Anthony, I just want to congratulate you and just do a good job for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Permission to speak from the chair? Anthony, congratulations. This is a no-brainer for me. And if I didn't know anything about you, just the fact that your name's Anthony. So, it means amazing things are going to, I think it translates to amazing things happen, something like that, right? On the communication, all in favor, all opposed? Aye. So awarded. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Calendar item number eleven, communication from the Chief of Planning and Community Development relative to an act authorizing the City of Revere to grant up to two additional licenses for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Claire Nzarillo, Solicitor's Office, two-eighty-one Broadway. I am obviously not Tom. He is on vacation, a much deserved one. I'm here tonight through Council President Cogliandro to you all to urge your support for the approval of the submitted Home Rule petition which would expand liquor licenses here in our city. I'll be brief because I know it's been a long night. The special legislation before you this evening represents a collaboration led by Tom between John Festa and the Planning Department, the Licensing Office, as well as my office. The requested language would allow Revere to surpass the quotas that are established in Section seventeen, Chapter one-thirty-eight, which is our governing law for all the liquor license activity that municipalities undergo. Many municipalities submit Home Rule petitions every year to go a couple over the quota when business calls for it. If enacted, our Licensing Commission in Revere would be able to consider, not automatically grant, but consider applications for two applicants within the Suffolk Downs development for licenses of the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises, which is a package store license. I can assure this council that these applicants have to meet the same stringent regulatory requirements that our current license holders have to meet. And the change that we're here before you today for is warranted because we want to encourage the economic growth and kind of that community engagement and buzz that we're all really eagerly awaiting from this development. And given the limited summer schedule of both our City Council and the state delegation that we have up there, I'm respectfully requesting that this council consider a vote this evening on a suspension of rules to show a good faith effort on behalf of the City of Revere to move along the contract negotiations that are between HYM and the lucrative tenants that we're seeking. State Representative Jessica Giannino has already graciously provided her review of the legislation before you, the results of which you have right now. I'm happy to answer any questions about the language of the act and John Festa is also present. If you have more business-related questions, he can handle those.
Thank you very much. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm the ward counselor on this and got calls from Mr. Fester and Tom and I don't have a problem with this. I don't think the planning, when they were planning this, they didn't know the commercial entity of what was coming into Suffolk Downs. I think they have like, out of nine places that they have, they have seven commitments and two of them are serving alcohol. So I don't have a problem with this as long, I want to see Suffolk Downs flourish and I think this is the best way we can do it. So, thank you. You have my support.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Claire, did you say these were package store licenses?
That's colloquially what we call them. That's how they're most offered in the city. But any kind of retail store, it doesn't have to be solely alcohol like Woody's, for example. It can also be a combination. You know, we have grocery stores that sell alcohol. Think of Trader Joe's down at Assembly Row, things like that.
So how would this be different for, for restaurants that came into the development? Would we have to offer separate licenses and a different...
So that's an on-premise license and I don't know the exact number for our quotas, but that would be a separate license that's not covered by the special act.
Counselor Silvestri, the full-service licenses, we're not at a cap yet. I believe there's still plenty of capacity for restaurants to operate at Suffolk Downs. If at some point in time we get to a, a, a need, we would probably have to come back. But I want to say there's eleven full-service liquor licenses available in the city still. And of course, the Suffolk Downs doesn't intend on having, like most of these lifestyle centers like Assembly Row, like Marketplace, they tend to attract a lot of restaurateurs. So, we, we hope to get to a point in time where we have to come back, but we don't think that that's going to be anytime real soon. But from a leasing standpoint, they have a lot, they have had a lot of inquiries, specifically the Trader Joe's model she mentioned. Trader Joe's operates a, a, a nice high-end grocery store, but part of their model is to have off-premise alcohol. So they would not be able to sign a lease if they weren't able to bring on, offering alcoholic beverages. And those are the types of businesses we're trying to attract.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. You said we are at our quota right now for this type of license. Are we, have we already surpassed that? Have we, is this the first time that we're going over that quota or?
I believe it changes based on the population. So as our population grows, our ratio of licenses to population count grows also. So it's been increasing, but we are at the quota as of right now.
And I, I do like the Trader Joe's analogy or similarity. I think that would be great. However, this is for an all-alcoholic beverages, right? And Trader Joe's doesn't sell hard liquor or things like that. It's just limited to wine. So, do we have any assurances, one, that this would, this obviously is not going to be limited to wine, correct?
Correct. That would be the, just the beer and wine, the malt license, which is separate from an all-alcohol license.
Okay. So this is more along the lines then of a package store if you're looking for all types of liquor?
It would be. I think a lot of these major corporations, they like to just get whatever the most encompassing is. I'm pretty sure the Trader Joe's has the all-alcohol sale license at Assembly Row. But if you also know, to use Assembly Row again as an example, because I worked there for a long time, they have a high, high-end liquor store offering, you know, vodka, tequila, the works. So, it would apply to whichever of the two that the HYM is able to negotiate with.
Would we have any assurances if we voted favorably on this as to what kind of controls we could have in place regarding exactly what type of establishments would be there? Because I, I think I'm fine with the higher-end, you know, cheese and wine shop and Trader Joe's model with selling wine and all of that I think is great. But I think there's a big difference between those types of establishments and just a corner, you know, package store. So what assurances would we have in place along those lines?
I'm going to let the mayor speak and also, this is something that the Licensing Commission has almost full authority over. So if there is any concern for any applicant that goes before them, we as a city and as employees and representatives are more than welcome at those meetings to voice our concerns for things like that.
Counselor, these are the types of questions that I had directly with the leasing office and with the ownership at HYM. We want to, we want to make sure that they're fulfilling their role of, of attracting national brands and the elevated brand without, you know, limiting the opportunity for local businesses to come into the Plaza. But they very much are, if you look at the developments that they've, they've already had and seen, you're seeing these types of national brands. Total Wine, for example, it's a full-service liquor store that is, it's an elevated brand and it's, it's highly sought because it offers a really good value. They have high, high frequency of visits and people tend to really enjoy them. High-end wine shops like Lucile or, I'm just going to use some of the names that are out there. These are the types that are contacting HYM to try to get into that property. There is a lot of inquiries, so they are going to be able to pick and choose from the best and the brightest and that's what we want. That's what, we want to be able to offer that, that elevated experience over at HYM.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I understand that that's the intent and the intentions are good and I, I appreciate that. However, maybe it's the lawyer in me, but I would feel more confident if we had some assurance in writing or with the License Commission when these licenses are issued, if that would be possible.
Right. Well, as, as an attorney, you probably would know, the, you can't discriminate against a certain type of business. So that would never happen and I know that you're not suggesting that. So to guarantee what, what brand would come in there, we couldn't say that. But we do have full operating control on granting licenses.
Well, not necessarily a brand, but I mean, then maybe there's a restriction on the license in terms of all alcoholic beverages to limit to wine. I don't, I don't know.
We haven't, I was going to say...
Yeah, we don't have that license yet.
Most of the, most of the inquiries to HYM are not just for beer and wine. These folks, they want to sell everything or just not be limited to beer and wine. And so if, if you think about, you know, I'm, I'm sure folks are thinking about maybe competition with some of the smaller mom-and-pop, like convenience stores that are in that area. And I, as a Revere resident, I live very close to Cappy's up on Route one. And even though it's closer to me, I still drive to Blanchard's because it's familiar to me. I know the prices. I know what they have. So, with that concern of who's going to be going into the development, it's going to be trying to attract tourists and trying to get people to spend money, not necessarily someone like me who's going to drive down the street to a really convenient and familiar store that I know I can get good prices at.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I support this, obviously. I think that someone like Tom O'Brien and HYM are looking for a Wedman's and they're not, there's no, you know, there's no rinky-dink operation going to go in that development. That's going to be a high-end development from start to finish. I'm completely confident in that. And if this is helping them put some leases together, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the ma'am. Mr. Mayor, did you say we had eleven licenses available in the city now?
So, I got to go back on my emails because I had requested Maggie Haney, our License Commissioner, to get me the update on full-service licenses for in, for restaurants, full-service in, in, in-store consumption. And I want to say there was about eleven remaining. We do have a few malt in, in-store operations available as well, like beer and wine for a store that, a restaurant that may want to only offer that. And then there are zero available full-service package licenses available. So the, we would need to increase that.
So there's zero all-alcoholic licenses?
Off, off-premise package stores, right? So liquor store, so a liquor store.
This, you know, and, and I'm, I'm for HYM and I don't mind working with them. But, you know, I, I have a concern about this right here going now because, I don't know, through you to the, to the clerk, do we have to have a public hearing on this?
There's no public hearing, but by the City Council, rules of order, special legislation shall first go to the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee.
Okay. So, you know, that, that's what I would want to discuss in Legislative Affairs. And let me say this, if it does go in there by the time we have our next meeting, and I believe it's in July. The legislature is going off until after the first of the year. And we know that nobody's going to be ready for an alcoholic license by then. So, I, I think this is rushing. It just, just seems like it's an all-alcoholic license, similar to what we've had all around. And, you know, when it happens, it happens. And I don't think, I don't think there's a big rush on it right now.
I, I hear your concerns and we're not looking to rush anything at the state level because we know they're out of session. Counselor, I'm the Counselor. Representative Giannino was nice enough to already provide a full review. So it's all good to go once they are back in session. The main purpose of getting a vote on it tonight would be to show a good faith efforts so that those letters of intent can turn into leases and we can know for sure who those tenants are going to be and report back to the council.
Well, you know, through you, Mr. President, you know, I think we've shown our good faith to HYM and Suffolk Downs quite a bit over the last fifteen years. You know, and holding off on this and wait and see what happens, you know, I have a feeling we, I, I think we should wait a little.
If you have questions for Legislative Affairs, I'd love to get them now so that we can be prepared for that meeting. Okay.
Thank you, Counselor. Also, Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the leeway. And Mr. Mayor and Claire, thank you for staying up. I got to say, my main concern, this body just approved the expansion of the Domino's Liquor Store that's going to be directly across the street from Liquor Store that's going to be directly across the street from this development. And I get it that one's a mom-and-pop and a small business, and one is going to be a total entity that we're trying to aim at, but there's no guarantee in that. And I believe that supporting our small businesses as well and not impacting them, which is going to be across the street, is something that we got to think about. And to know what would be going there or what's going to be going after this license would help us really, help to pass this. Because I'd hate to see just a liquor store go there that's selling even an up brand of alcohol. I don't think it's something that we need more of in the city currently.
I think it's a chicken and an egg situation. You know, I wish we could tell you who's going in there and who's going to get the licenses. But unfortunately, without assurance from the city that we would grant two licenses, we're not probably going to move quickly in securing a lease from those taxpaying businesses in order to tell you who they're going to be. So we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place.
How many licenses would this bring us to?
Two.
No, 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 total.
Maggie, do you know the total if approved with two? Fifteen.
Okay.
Per Maggie.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. I think these two licenses are a small thing that will help a big thing, and I'd like to vote on this tonight. I think this is important to send a message to the major developer, the best development we're ever going to have in this city, to let them go forward and let them lease their property. And I believe this hinges on these licenses. So I want to vote on this tonight, and I hope my colleagues agree with me.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
I agree with Counselor Zambudo. I think this is something so small, I don't understand what the thinking is to just approve two more liquor licenses. I think it's something very little. And if you're looking at the big picture, this is going to help us raise the money that we need to build a high school. I just don't, I don't understand what the thought is, the thought process with this council tonight over this. It's just a liquor license. It's not a big deal.
I'd also just like to flag, with your vote tonight, this wouldn't be an automatic granting or approval of those two licenses to these mysterious figureheads. This would just be approval to send it to the state delegation. If they have a big problem with it, which I don't think they will, because Jessica Giannino reviewed it for us, they would definitely consult back with us. But this isn't automatic, 100% we're granting them. That's up to the Licensing Commission, once those two applicants receive permission from the state through our special legislation to apply for these two extra ones. So we're not automatically granting it to two mysterious business owners tonight. We would just be voting to send it to the state, which, as someone on this side pointed out, I forget, they're not in session right now, so it's not going to happen right away. It's just going to be able to turn those letters of intent into secured leases. And then we'd be able to know who those tenants are. And then if you have qualms with either of them, we can speak to the License Commission about what the concerns are.
Thank you. Permission to speak from the Chair? Thank you. How many residential units are going into Suffolk Downs?
So the Revere side is looking to be approximately, one completion, 2,500. And Boston has had ideas of somewhere between 7,500. So you're talking about close to 10,000 residents between Revere and Boston.
So my only question is, is two enough? Do we need to do more?
Well, the Boston side may want to go after some of that as well. But, you know, we do think, and again, I hope to come to you at some point in time for full-service restaurant licenses, but we do think that this is going to suffice. We didn't want to have it to be alcohol alley down there. We think that, I can't, you know, with some confidentiality, I can't sit there and say what I am thinking is going to happen, but I'll just say that some of those other complexes that you know of have these types of stores that you want in Revere. And we do have the control because it does still have to go through the City Council, I'm sorry, the Licensing Board to be approved. And of course, you know, the conversations I've had with HYM have been, you know, we're looking to add to the community, we're not looking to create a direct conflict with a neighboring package store. And they heard me loud and clear.
Thank you. I just, you know, I feel like this is going to provide a service to what's going to be built out as a mini-city of its own. And I completely agree with Counselor Garino Sawaya. You know, this is going to generate revenue for us that we sorely need from the Suffolk Downs development. And also, I just want to state that, you know, I don't foresee something like a liquor store that is also a Keno parlor going into Suffolk Downs. And I have full faith, and Rob Sulevich, our License Chair and the License Commission, to do the right thing. And if anybody watches those meetings, they are very thorough with every license that comes through them, especially when it comes to liquor. So I am also in favor of voting for this tonight. Counselor Jaramillo?
Mr. President, you know, thank you, Claire, for bringing this up, and John Festa and Mayor for working on this. You know, this, I work, my nine-to-five is doing legislative work. This is a wonderful piece of legislation. We all know that Rob Giannino is a seasoned legislator who was also at this dais at some point. So I'm going to motion to suspend the rules and take a vote on this today.
We have a motion on the floor to suspend the rules?
No.
Who's saying no? Counselor? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Counselor Nowoselski reported as no. Madam Clerk, let's take a roll call.
Shall the City Council approve an act authorizing the City of Revere to grant up to two additional licenses for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on premises? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Giannino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Jaramillo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Present.
Voting present, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowoselski?
Present.
Voting present, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counselor President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the special act has been approved.
Back to regular order of business.
Thank you, Counselors.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the city auditor relative to the FY24 retained earnings closeout transfer to the Water and Source Stabilization Fund.
Mr. Viskey?
Thank you, Counselor Richard Viskey, 21 Broadway, City CFO. As we close out fiscal year 2025, what you have before you is the remaining certified retained earnings of the Water and Source Enterprise Fund. What I'm proposing here is to appropriate all available retained earnings into the Water Source Stabilization Fund for use during fiscal year 2025. As you know, during my budget presentation, the fiscal year 2025 water source rates have been set by this council through a three-year rate setting process we did in 2023. However, those rates will need to be supplemented by some retained earnings in order to keep that three-year rate structure. So just want to put these dollars aside to help alleviate that appropriation when it comes up next year. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Any counselors? Let's take the roll. Madam Clerk?
Shall the City Council approve a transfer from the Water and Source retained earnings account to the Water and Source Stabilization Fund in the amount of $241,672? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Giannino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Jaramillo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowoselski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counselor President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Calendar item number 13, communication from the city auditor requesting various free cash transfers to close out FY24.
Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Nowoselski?
Through you to Mr. Viskey. Small repairs for $260,000 at the city yard?
No, just to clarify, thanks for the question, Counselor. Through you, Mr. Chairman, that appropriation is going into our account that we use to do small repairs throughout city buildings. I think the way that account was written up makes it appear that that's just for DPW. But that's, it's controlled by the DPW Facility Department for doing small repairs on the fire station, police station, city hall, et cetera. So we held off on doing a full capital plan as we went through the high school bond vote. So we'll be doing a capital plan over the summer to present to you. But in the meantime, we've depleted our funds that do small repairs. So this is in order to keep repairs going over the summer and such.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Shall the City Council approve the following transfers from free cash to the following accounts? $425,000 to solid waste deficits, $350,000 to street lighting, $260,000 to DPW all municipal buildings, and $39,140 to the estate of George Rotundo. Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Giannino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Jaramillo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowoselski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counselor President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the free cash transfers have been approved. Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the City Council take the appointment of Diana Ayala to the Library Board of Trustees from the Appointment Subcommittee and move to confirm said appointment.
Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. Diana, welcome. Can you just give us a little brief history about your experience in, you want to be in the Library Board of Trustees?
Good evening. I have an extension experience.
I'm so sorry, ma'am. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry.
That's my fault. I should have asked.
My name is Diana Ayala, living in Mountainton Ave. Thank you. I have experience with the community, all community, as a community of reach, also a preschool teacher and pre-k teacher, and now I'm working with the elders. So I cover all community. And I can give you more of my experience as a teacher, actually, and reading now, my story for kids, my own story, also a writer or singer, so on, the artistic things. And I think we have to approach the children and the young people to the libraries again because they are on the phone all the time. So we have to create new techniques to come to the library and make you more creative in this area. And we all experience I have with the kids, I think I can help you in that area.
Thank you. It sounds wonderful. Any other counselors?
Thank you. Go ahead, Chairwoman McKenna.
I just want to say congratulations and good luck. I look forward to seeing what you have to offer and bring to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, I know all the new generation speak modern one language. And I can also give you my first language in the community in helping them to approach to the English language because that's where they live. So I think we have to work as a team in helping kids to grow up. We are a creative nature, so we have to encourage kids and young kids to be creative in this new world.
Counselor Jaramillo?
Diana, what a pleasure to see you here and very excited that you've getting this appointment. And, you know, for those of us who have been able to witness your music and your career and your friendship, just really excited that you're getting appointed to this and hope that our colleagues will join me in voting in favor of your appointment.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Diana, I'd just like to say welcome and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Do a good job for the city.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Counsel President Cogliandro that the Mayor, Chief of Police, and DPW Superintendent appear before the City Council to discuss the growing problem with vehicles speeding throughout the city, enforcement of traffic laws, issuance of violations, and speedcoming measures such as speed tables.
Permission to speak from the Chair? I believe I can speak for every single Counselor, past, present, and probably future, that this is one of the phone calls we receive more than any other type of phone call. This motion was submitted on a day that I received eight phone calls from different areas of my ward alone. And I think it's time that we all have a conversation with all the people involved in public so that we can all understand what the issues are, how we're going to rectify any, and what we're going to do to make our streets safer, because there's a lot of people scared out there. I do want to state that I did speak to Mayor Keefe. I believe we are going to have this presentation or this meeting at our next meeting on July 22nd. So we're looking forward to seeing the Chief, the Super, the DPW, and the Mayor to have a conversation with all of us. Is there any, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And this is a great motion. I truly believe that we need a full, all-hands-on-deck approach. And I think the only way to really curb this is, I hate to say it, but enforcement. Because the lack of people that want to obey traffic lights and signals and even bus stops, when the bus stop sign goes out, people just don't want to stop today, and it's getting to be out of control. And until someone gets hurt, I hate to see that what it takes. So thank you for filing this motion.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowoselski?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I say, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I got three calls this week on three different streets. And I'll mention Franklin Avenue, where the children playing in the vicinity on a regular basis, Campbell Avenue, again, and Standish Road leading to the Garfield School. And also, let me say, it's four, because I got Walnut Avenue at 50 Walnut Ave, where the senior citizens are crossing on a regular basis and people are flying down that street. And I think it's time we get these additional speed bumps put in. I don't care what it costs, safety. We have to protect our people. So I say thank you again, and it was great timing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend you on this motion. I think it's a great motion. I think we need to have a serious discussion about this. I know there were problems all around the city. I know that Squire Road in particular, we had a horrible accident not too long ago there. So people are getting hurt. And I will echo what Counselor Silvestri said in terms of enforcement. I really hate to see the city become too overly prevalent with speed tables, although I know they are a measure to try to curb this behavior. But I really think we need to see some enforcement measures as well. Thank you.
Counselor, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jaramillo?
Thanks for filing, Mr. President. This is great, and I hope to have a robust discussion with the professionals in this field.
Thank you, Counselor.
Do I talk?
And if I just may be granted a little leeway, I just, you know, I agree with Counselor Kelly. I don't want to become a city of speed bumps or speed tables. But I do know that, you know, where we are still trying to fill positions in the police department, those are essentially a 24/7 speed deterrent. Even if it slows a car down for two seconds, it slows them down for two seconds. And again, don't want them all over the city. But if we strategically place them, I think they could be very valuable to our public safety. And as was stated, definitely looking forward to a conversation about this with everybody. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Council President Cogliandro that the Mayor direct the Police Chief to provide the City Council with quarterly reports relative to traffic stops on all sectors.
Speaks for itself. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Argenzio that the City Council order to a public hearing an ordinance amending metered rates of the revised ordinances of the City of Revere.
Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm offering this motion for four, five, and six-family homes. They are currently being charged the commercial water rate for their buildings. I'd like to provide some relief for owner-occupied, four-, five-, and six-family homes. I know we're always struggling with absentee landlords. They live out of the city. They live out of the state. And they're just interested in collecting checks. And this gives a little relief and a little appreciation to owner-occupied, four-, five-, and six-family homes. And I think we appreciate them living in these homes, watching out for them. And that's the reason for the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? We do have a member of the audience that would like to speak. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, sir. My name is Ira Nowoselski. I live at 53 D. Home Street. And I am recusing myself from this motion as I am affected by it. And I thank Counselor Argenzio for putting this in. We tried to do this in the last session we had, and it got caught in Rule 23. So what's happening is here, a lot of the four-, five-, and six-family homes that have senior citizens that own them and living there were affected by this rule that was put in in 2018 and just put into effect in 2022. So when we all got caught up on it, it's costing approximately 47 different homes in the city that are affected by this. And many of them are senior citizens. So they have asked that, you know, we work on this and try and get it reversed back down to residential rates for these four-, five-, and six-family homes. And it's costing all these senior citizens and others, of course, a few others, approximately an extra $2,000 a year just on water. And what they've had to do is, over this last two years, is actually raise the rent to make up the difference, you know, to pay for these. So I, you know, I hope we can have this public hearing and have some of these folks come up and say their piece to everybody and hopefully get this passed before the end of the year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, I think, you know, I believe it was two years ago, maybe last year, that we had a long discussion about this, that we came to the agreement that it was going to, we were going to agree on four, and then five and six was, you know, how many of these are owner-occupied? How does this impact seniors that are getting the rate? And does it impact them as well? How does it impact overall the city's water and sewer rates? These are the things that I think we need to have more of a clarity on. And I'd just like to know if we could get the numbers on how many owner-occupied are in these numbers.
Counselor, if I may, I know this is going to go to a public hearing and then to Ways and Means, so we're definitely going to have opportunities for a lot of information. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to see it go to Ways and Means before it goes to a public hearing.
Any objection on the motion to send this to Ways and Means prior to a public hearing?
Mr. President, before you vote on that, if I may, just so you know, there are 47 homes in the city that are affected by this. And approximately 75% are senior citizens. But it is owner-occupied, and that's what the difference is. It's not an investor, that someone that has a six-family home and wants to make money off it. You know, they should be paying the commercial rate if they don't live there. So I would hope that we could, you know, the public hearing won't happen till July anyways. And then even if it goes into Ways and Means afterwards, it's still a discussion that has to be brought up. So I would hope that it have the scheduled public hearing.
I think I have a motion on the floor.
Yes, that's...
I was also given the floor, Counselor, before the motion.
You're acting as a citizen, aren't you?
I am, and I may discuss this...
Excuse me, gentlemen. I granted Counselor Nowoselski leeway. There is a motion on the floor which we are going to take up now. But the motion on the floor is to send this to Ways and Means Subcommittee prior to a public hearing. Would we like a roll call, or can we... Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call to send the motion to Ways and Means. Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino? Yes. Counselor Garino Sawaya? Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haremio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowoselski is recused. Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. The motion will be sent to Ways and Means. Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Counselor Zambudo that the City Council establish by rule of order the following criteria for the installation of City Councilor portraits in the council chamber. Portraits must be of City Councilors who have passed away. Two, the individual must have made notable contributions to the city or represents a significant milestone in the history of the City Council. Three, the City Council shall designate a subcommittee to review nominations based on the contributions or milestone. Four, nominations for portrait display shall be submitted by City Councilors only. Five, once a nomination is approved, a high-quality portrait will be selected from existing digital photographs. Six, portraits will be displayed in designated space in the council chamber approved by the selection committee.
Mr. President? May I put a motion on the floor?
I'm going to, I was going to allow, but Counselor Zambudo, but if you're going to put a substitute motion, that would trump that. So go ahead.
I would like to put a motion on the floor that we add George Rotundo's portrait to the council chambers.
I don't believe that would be, that's, that would be another, that's separate from this motion, Counselor. This, we don't want to add that. This is being added to the council rules of order. We don't want to add a single counselor to the rules of order. If you'd like to put that on the floor right after we're done with this, we can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
You've got it. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. This truly really speaks for itself. With all due respect to my colleague from Ward 5, I think that that would go into this motion, and the select committee would decide. And I'm sure they probably, my guess is they would find he had the criteria to be in there. So, but this is to clean up some stuff that's gone on in the past and simply, I think a lot of us know this is a good idea. And so I put it forward so I could take the heat.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak? Counselor Argenzio.
So this motion wouldn't remove any existing portraits? No. Okay. Very good.
Any other counselors? So we can either put this on the table or refer this to the committee of the whole? Do we have a motion for either?
Just a point of clarity, I thought it automatically was tabled, any rule change. I, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not... Oh, okay. Listen, I will never question our city clerk.
I'm going to motion to put this, to table this till the next meeting.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselors Haremio and McKenna and Garino Sawaya. Whereas budget hearings only provide for participation of the Ways and Means Committee members, and whereas the City Council is committed to budget transparency and accountability, that the Mayor be requested to direct all department heads to be present at the June 24th City Council meeting to address any questions of the full City Council relative to the FY '25 budget.
Counselor Haremio.
Mr. President, speaks for itself, but Counselor McKenna, Garino Sawaya, and myself have conferred a little bit and decided that we will rescind this motion. However, if they would like to speak, I would yield my time to them.
Counselor McKenna, all set. Counselor Garino Sawaya? This is withdrawn.
Council President, may I make that motion now?
Absolutely.
Okay. I would like to put in a motion that George Rotundo's portrait be put in the chambers. George was a very big advocate for the people, and he deserves a spot in the chambers. He served, I think, for 14 years on the City Council. And five years was at, five terms as a counselor-at-large and four terms as a counselor of Ward 4. George was a person who wasn't afraid to voice his opinion on difficult issues. And I think he deserves a spot in our chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We have a motion on the floor. Would anyone else like to speak? Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. And although I think this is a great motion, I think the committee process that Counselor Zambudo brought up was the appropriate venue and way to do this. I think that avoids the just nominations and motions to go up and counselors not feeling comfortable having to vote yes or no. It gives the, a private section to vote on people that'll go up on the wall.
So I guess my question is, I'm trying to just ask the clerk if we have to create a subcommittee for portraits. I don't know the way that we're going to form this committee. I agree with you, Counselor, that, and I also agree with Counselor Garino Sawaya that I would love George Rotundo's picture in these chambers. He's one of the smartest people I ever knew. So I think we should keep that motion, maybe table that motion for now until the next meeting, until we can figure out the process of creating a portrait committee. And then we'll go from there. Does that sound good to everybody? This motion will be tabled.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counselor Garino Sawaya that the Mayor request the DPW to repave and repair Hastings Street. This roadway is completely deteriorated and is in desperate need of revitalization.
Counselor Garino Sawaya.
I'm going to send this over to Traffic Commission, please. Thank you.
Counselor, all due respect, I don't think this belongs in traffic. This is a work request. Does any other counselors want to speak on this? It's just, well, being this is a work request, this, truthfully, things like this, we all go through 3-1-1, and we all contact the departments themselves. I don't think that traffic would have the authority to vote on where we repave or repair. They handle traffic.
Mr. President?
Counselor.
The potholes that are on that street are like crevices. They're huge. They're big craters. And what happens is the water forms when there's a rainstorm, and the cars are getting ruined, all their tires flattening and stuff. So that's why I actually brought it in front of the council because it's, this is an issue that actually has to get addressed immediately. It's not something that can wait till next year if we have money in the budget. It just needs to get addressed. That's why I brought it in front of the council. Whatever committee that the council sees fit to send it to, that's where I'll send it. Thank you.
Mr. President?
I appreciate the advocacy on the issue. I just feel like this should be placed on file personally. And then we should, the DPW should be contacted. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. And that's what I was just going to say. I mean, the DPW is doing a fine job, a really good job. And I call all the time, and it takes just, it takes a while. But, you know, it might take a week. It might take three days. It might, they might be able to do it right then and there. But if you call them, if you call Billy Guanasso, he'll make sure that, you know, everything gets done. So you have to see Winthrop Bev and what they've done to Winthrop Bev. They've fixed all the potholes. So, thank you.
Counselor Garino Sawaya, is there a current work order in for this already?
Yes, there should be a 3-1-1.
Okay.
I'm, I'll call tomorrow. I'll call Bill tomorrow.
Okay. I just, you know, we do have rules of order. This would fall under Rule 37. Feel free to look it up. But if it's okay, I'd like to place this on file so that we can contact the DPW. Place on file.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Council President Cogliandro that the Mayor direct the DPW to research pricing and, if reasonable, an order for signage stating autistic person area. These should be hung in high-traffic areas with autistic residents.
This is also a work request to the DPW I was notified of. But I think that this should be something we consider heavily. We have a lot of children who are on the spectrum and especially, you know, they don't, they don't understand the dangers of traffic. They don't understand the common things that we understand. So if we can alert drivers and save a life, I'm all for it. I don't know if anyone else has anything to say. Otherwise, this is going to get placed on file. Thank you.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the Mayor request constituent services to issue a reverse 911 call to all residents reminding them that fireworks are illegal and that fireworks are a hazard due to the close proximity of homes in the city.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to put my colleague, Counselor Kelly, on this motion. So I would like to say that this motion came from former Counselor Sereno from last year, after the Fourth of July. He asked if we could do a reverse 911 to show, because he was inundated, and so wasn't I. But the city was inundated with fireworks, and then they left their debris behind. So he was, but it never really went anywhere. So that's why I'm putting it in. Not only are fireworks illegal, but they are dangerous, especially in a neighborhood like Beachmont. My house was built in 1864. It's all wood. One little spark, it's gone. So fire is the number one concern. And where the houses are so close together, it's really scary. I'm out there on my porch every single July 4th. But lighting off fireworks are not the only safety concern for the neighborhood. They are detrimental to veterans and animals and should be banned across the country. I have an Iraq War Marine veteran that lives in my house that has a really hard time with noise. And this is, it's a really special motion for me because I see what he goes through every Fourth of July or every time a firework goes off. So I'm asking the Mayor to put out a call to inform residents that this, this city, to not light fireworks for these main reasons that I have stated, and remind them that the fireworks are illegal in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with everything that Counselor McKenna said, and I'm really happy that she brought this motion. I'm a little mad at myself that I didn't think of it. And I would also, in addition to this, maybe, we don't have the time this year, but next year, to try to implement any informational campaign that we can to get the word out that fireworks are illegal and that we, you know, we don't want them being mishandled in our city and used and all of this and all of the safety concerns that they bring up. So, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Counselor McKenna. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor? Sorry, do you, would you like to say something, sir? Name and address for the record, sir?
My name is Anthony Cantino. And I received a letter on a request that I had made to speak before the City Council. It came from Ashley E. Milk or whatever.
Is this in regards to fireworks?
Well, I'm going to request to speak. I'm not on the agenda. You can deny me...
You need to file a communication to the clerk.
Then I'll put it through my ward counselor, and he'll bring it in before you.
If a counselor brings a motion, it will be heard, but if...
He should have brought it in for me months ago.
Okay, you're excused. You can have a seat.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Cantino, calm down. Are you going to be asked to leave? End of story. Thank you very much. We're in agreement on something finally. I guess that... I guess that classifies as fireworks. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Counselor Novoselsky that the mayor request the Traffic Commission to approve the installation of a speed bump on Walnut Avenue in the interest of public safety for the senior residents of 50 Walnut Ave.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Although it's self-explanatory, it's just a, an extension of what we spoke about before, because I was already on top of it, and, you know, I, I know we're looking for some safety around here. Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed?
Calendar item number 24, motion presented by Counselor Novoselsky that the mayor request the Traffic Commission to consider a no-left turn on North Shore Road to Cove Street during school hours unless you are a resident of Cove Street. The traffic congestion is out of control and dangerous. Vehicles block the intersection, make illegal U-turns, and incessantly beep horns while students are trying to cross the street. Standish Road can handle the traffic flow much better than Cove Street.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, self-explanatory, and we want to refer this to the Traffic Commission for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. This is gonna be referred to Traffic.
Calendar item number 25, motion presented by Counselor Novoselsky that the mayor request the DCR Commissioner to authorize DCR staff to order and install LED flashing crosswalk lights at all crosswalks on Ocean Avenue from Shirley Avenue to Riviera Street in the interest of public safety for all pedestrians utilizing Ocean Avenue and Riviera Beach Boulevard.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this was put in, in 2022 and was never reacted to, so I want to reinstitute it and see if we can get the new commissioner to get it done for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor, oh, sorry, Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. And if the, the maker of the motion wouldn't mind, I'd like to present this from the whole council to the DCR Commissioner, because I think it's a great motion, I think we need more of these on our crosswalks at the beach and pedestrian safety is important down there.
Thank you, Counselor. Any opposition? If we could please add the entire City Council to the motion. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Counselor Haremio that the City Council approve the attached resolution congratulating the Boston Celtics on its 18th NBA championship.
Counselor Haremio.
Well, Mr. President, what a momentous last couple of weeks we've had here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and why not celebrate a little bit? And I, I'm gonna ask Counselor Novoselsky to add himself to this motion if, at all possible. But of course, nonetheless, I will read it for the people's edification here, whereas the Boston Celtics basketball team, the Celtics, is the professional basketball team of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that plays in the National Basketball Association. Whereas the Celtics are representative of the grit, hard work, determination of the people of Riviera, Boston, and the entire state. Whereas on Monday, June 17th, 2024, the Celtics closed a best-of-seven series, winning four of seven games by beating the Dallas Mavericks basketball team in a game five of the series by a score of 106 to 88. Whereas Joe Missoula, the coach of the Celtics, became the youngest coach to win an NBA championship at the age of 35, about the same age as Ira. Whereas Al Gore, the power forward slash center of the Celtics, became the second-oldest player to win an NBA championship at the age of 38, about the same age as, anyway. Whereas Jalen Brown, the Celtics' shooting guard, small forward, won the NBA, NBA Finals' Most Valuable Player trophy. Whereas with this win, the Celtics will raise its 18th championship banner, the most in NBA history, breaking the tie it has held with the Los Angeles basketball team. So resolved that the City Council of the City of Riviera, on behalf of the residents of Riviera, congratulates the Celtics on its extraordinary achievement, and further resolved that this resolution be communicated by the clerk of the City of Riviera to the Celtics organization, serve as an invitation to bring the 2024 Larry O'Brien Championship Trophy to the Riviera City Council Chamber for Riviera residents to appreciate and to take a picture of and with in celebration of such great achievement. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 27, motion presented by Counselor Haas that the mayor request planning and community development to assess a proper location for the installation of a splash pad and to further investigate grant opportunities to fund said installation.
Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is something I think is long overdue. You look at neighboring cities and towns, Everett, Arlington, Medford, a number of the surrounding cities have splash pads, mini splash pads, that offer residents and young families a chance to cool off, stay active, and get exercise, and build a sense of community. And I know we have the beach, and everyone says, oh, our residents can just travel to the beach, and some people don't have transportation they can rely on, and sometimes traffic is an issue for young families. So my hope is that we could get a splash pad somewhere centrally located, maybe located off Broadway or maybe just somewhere where it's not as close to the beach as we have heard previous ones that were in the works were mentioned to go. But thank, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Garino Sawaya.
I love this motion by Counselor Haas. Splash pads are really a lot of fun for kids. As a past teacher, the kids enjoy running through the water, and it's, it's a safe way of them being in the water with no risk of drowning. And they allow the kids to, it's environmentally friendly, and they allow the kids to actually, they encourage interactivity between them, and what happens is they, they help with their, their gross motor movement skills, like jumping and running and, and trying to dodge the water and stuff like that. So I think this is an amazing motion, and I'm 100% for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor Haas, for putting this motion in. I think it's much overdue in the city, across the city. I think we need several of them, and, and it gives an opportunity for handicapped children with ADA issues, an opportunity to, to really experience a play setting and cool off with all the dangers of, as Counselor Sawaya said, drowning. So great motion, fully in support, and hopefully we can get it done soon.
I totally agree, and I would definitely be on board with seven of them.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you. Counselor Haas, this was a great, is a great motion, but if we do get two or three, I think one should be on the beach, because I think kids are afraid, some, you know, with everything that's going on with sharks and this and that, tidal waves, it would be safer for the kids to, to go in a splash pad. And what a great place to have it, in between maybe one of the, the buildings. So, I mean, I think this would be, this is a great motion, but if we do get two or three or four, I think Riviera Beach would be a wonderful place for it to be. Yeah, one in each ward.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haremio.
Mr. President, this is a, a great motion. I'd like to highlight the importance of this motion. Again, we've been talking a little bit about climate resiliency, and of course, as days get hotter, summers get longer, these are gonna be such critical infrastructure for our city, these splash pads. You know, I've mentioned, we're, we're an environmental justice community. Environmental justice communities like ours lack shade, more so than other communities, more so than more affluent communities. And so making sure that the public has access to this as we enter a critical tipping point in the climate crisis is so important. So I commend my colleague, Counselor Haas, for this motion, and hope that the mayor will, will do a good job at ensuring that we can place this infrastructure.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
I'd like to point a personal privilege.
State your point.
On June 14th, I attended a ceremony at the State House along with my wife, State Representative Jeff Turco, State Representative Jessica Janino, and Counselor Haas. Sally Varano.
Can I hear you?
Of the Parks and Recreation Department. Was given the Unsung Heroine Award for her work with the Parks and Recreation Department. Ms. Sally, as she is affectionately known, is the cornerstone of that department. Her work with the youngest of children has touched hundreds of lives. Sally has become a second mother to these children, and it was a great opportunity, and it was a great honor for me to participate in that ceremony, so congratulations to Ms. Sally.
Mr. President, a, a kind of an announcement to let everybody know that July 7th, the concerts begin at McMackin Memorial Park at 249 Broadway on, again, July 7th, Sunday at 6:00 PM for six weeks. So I hope everybody will come down and enjoy, and American Legion Post 61 will have its weekly barbecue during that time, so they can come down and eat at the same time. And there will be a beer garden. So thank you very much.
Counselor Kelly.
Just like to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is no further business, the meeting is adjourned. We will reconvene on Monday, July 22nd. Everybody have a good evening.